I'm probably.
Thank you, but alright.
Yes.
You're the star of the show tonight.
Yes, I am.
So now.
It didn't look like.
How how much did this parcel, the C one, if they see two is not already in C two?
How much is not? Well, it's probably about one point three roughly about half of it.
Oh, it is.
About half of it, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I was saying, I thought it was around an acre, but I.
Yeah, it's about an acre.
Wasn't it under the same ownership?
Yeah.
The whole time?
Yep.
That was a great part of it. Been that way for. At least.
The map got me booped up, sorry.
Yes, by this gentleman before it was like a new place. We need to put.
Before that, it was a little kind of cafe.
It was it was a grocery store, so we had to flip down there for phasers and then then Penrod's took it over and had it in store and then they had the the cafe. Oh, hell yeah.
Glory, I think we were in.
It could have been.
That's my thing.
When people chase you out of their store at the brim, you're not going to have that much.
Yeah.
I mean, we proposed.
They don't hear anymore.
Yeah.
The more I learned about it, my thought, C one just seems like a better. And when they came to, not this last meeting, but the meeting before. And they thought that they had the less restrict, the more restrictive code, they were just fine with it, but then once they found out. They were actually asking for the less restrictive code, and then it was the deal breaker they needed the less restrictive code. I don't know, but I I will go with. You guys, because you live out there, but my preference would be to do C one instead of C two, because I think that fits the. It was in better best. And if the original use was more C one, and then it kind of evolved into a C two. It's 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 difficult, but. Like, I will, I will go with you guys, because that's what we don't want about.
I. Another thing has brought forth right on point seven.
Yeah, it's gonna be next. Well, and the part that gives zone for commercial is Z two already. So I think the Z two with the restrictions. Works for me, because I find it difficult to go back.
Where's? So many doubles is land, I mean, that's the good and take of it, because we're getting rid of the buffer.
But how much of it is in the road?
Yeah.
On on both on both sides.
No, I didn't really calculate, yeah, I didn't calculate to that degree, I can, I can do that pretty quick here.
He he loses quite a bit, because every guy.
Yeah.
By going halfway into the mid center screen.
We have a buyer that wants to do something different.
So from what I heard, the two buyers that were interested, there was a restaurant. And then there was a like a recreation facility, like indoor.
Oh, cool.
You know, like.
Soccer, volleyball, something.
Things like that.
I hope that volleyball high school, because I remember doing it now.
Thought that.
I was gonna.
Oh, we only get the back end from my. Build build.
Who's bringing her?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I thought they actually.
Throw me another one.
You can do short term bad advice. I can, I can, I can cover, I have it, I'll think of that in my.
Oh, that's. That's a, that's how we can break that, they have them already creating that as a part of it. I'm glad we did.
I wasn't thinking about.
Right.
I've never been in that high school, they get pregnant, I'm just. I'm dressed up, so I wanted to hit it also, maybe they're not like us, where we had to take off and go somewhere.
Maybe another thing.
Yeah, maybe I didn't have to take off, but I just was already.
I was the same way.
So we're all. Okay.
The one thing that did come to mind. Was that if they're getting, if we're willing to go with C two. Then in the development agreement. They should defer, we'll defer it for now, because we don't know what fourteen hundred south is going to look like right there on that intersection. But there should be, we should add something through the motion. For an a a straight improvement at some point in time. Because we've asked all the other developments that have come in along fourteen hundred to kick in with some.
But we can't do it right now, is it too detached from everything else too worthwhile?
Well, we're afraid that if he does it, then it'll just get ripped out and destroyed, and it'll be a waste of his money and benefit of the economy.
That's hard, because it's hard to enforce with money and escrow and the law.
Yeah, money and escrow, by the time we actually pull it, probably fifty percent of what it was worth in the beginning, and I don't know, sorry.
You're going to be restrictive?
Yeah.
Do it that way, nobody can develop it.
Until they make those improvements.
That's that's. Yeah.
Yeah. Is that me?
Yeah, we've been missing you.
Could be here.
But they might, they might want to fill up that piece before the rest of those, and I end up in that, I think, where.
It's probably on the phone out. They picked up by the microphone.
Well.
Where's it echoing? I don't hear it echoing anymore. The things he's pointing.
And with the building that are in there, which one is the the one that serves the house, center of the old store? And then he's put up probably what a forty by sixty building.
Was that one of you?
That. Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, okay. I'm just making sure the mics are working correctly.
Two acres. So. Oh.
No, you can't hear it either.
We heard you. We can hear you. That's the way we're hearing it.
The camera said.
Mike is on in there.
I thought that was me.
Dirty word, sorry, I got the traffic with the help and her figure that out. Did we say anything different, Andrew, than what we'd already said before? No.
Maybe restriction might run into the same issue you're talking about, that the development bodies go through before we're ready to really haul us out the whole road.
So what happens to the other, I'd rather take my chances and pushing it down the road a little bit and get something later than now. So we better kind of buy it some funding now, that some escrow and just at least we have that. Or is that?
Thank you.
There's money now.
I think.
Then.
Nothing later.
Yeah.
So that that's what I was gonna say, what is it, the bird in the hand or the one in the bush thing?
There is a saying.
Bird in the hand is better than two in the bush.
Yeah, so maybe it'll cost twice the most down the road than it does if we got.
Do you understand that?
I get it.
You heard it from your grandpa, I never understood it, huh?
My response.
So loud now. Tell Sarah. Yeah. Yeah, still get your own detail.
I can't speak most of my grandparents.
That's good, I always get my sound.
Kind of people that.
Be there.
My grandmother cared about animals.
What?
My grandmother cared about animals. And. You know, a lot of white, there's a big, small. She'd always say, sticks and stones can break your bones, but birds will never hurt you, so forget me. Yeah, they should get more kids that.
No, today's world. Oh, you'd be in jail for even saying that. He lived in Germany, especially. Now we have no friends on that.
No work session today. Now you guys.
When you get to.
Some quietness going on. For a minute or two.
Go wrong on the judge property.
Jari just came down me.
I just came down for you.
We've been missing you too.
So we come to a conclusion on what we.
He's just been doing very good.
It was great, hasn't it?
It's obviously requirements and if everyone's.
And when in our other meeting, when we talked about the screening requirements, we brought up the stuff that you said, the county, these officials. Well, they said that ours is more restrictive than even what you sent from our, so it's great, yeah. That's what we, did we talk about Thursday, or the last time you were in here?
The number is all right, Karen, I said.
Okay, that's. So, good information, sir, and I liked what they did, what you sent us, what Harrisville does.
As long as we got something in place, I'm happy about that. Yeah, it started making me worried, because I was like, I don't.
We might want to look at ours, so you can put it implemented in Harrisville, if it's more restrictive. Now that Harrisville's already almost all built out, right?
But there's a lot of commercial going in next residential now, which is what we're going to be dealing with, pounding a lot, so it's important that you consider.
There's probably a bit of that in Harris.
Is there?
Yeah.
Surprise.
What behind the brick manufacturer that aired it?
No, just all the way along, like eighty nine, Washington, it's really under the.
I think about his North Ogden, but yeah, there's a lot of hairs.
It was all been built out down below, that's the problem, they got plenty of.
Well, great, yeah, I mean, I plan to just run through these slides, and then I'll also have some sections of the commercials on code. And the architectural and screening standards, I'll quickly go through some of those details. And and kind of like our basic format from prior meeting was, I think we'll give a chance for the applicant to stand up right first, or is it?
Yeah.
Is that is that the direction of it? Okay.
Answered, and so we did last time, I thought it worked well.
Sounds good.
That works.
I thought we had to probably talk first.
Yeah.
And then.
Let the applicant present themselves.
Dale Jordan's the applicant.
Instead of the county.
Is that the way we're doing it?
Um, babe. Well, I like that, I feel like I'm speaking for Rick, but Rick, you want to clarify what the the reason why?
It was more so that it looked like that we weren't representing the developer. And the developer was presenting his case, and then we could explain the ordinance.
Yeah, so.
So it's the side representing.
You'll give your report, and then we'll in the public cannon and. The usual routine, right?
So we're thrilled for staff, I was here.
Yep.
I like it.
And developer again, if needed. Then respond back for that, yeah. So. Are we leaning just filmed and vague, I want to be a little bit prepared and go on there and be leaning towards asking for some kind of improvement, road improvement, whether. Do we want to talk about that in there, or do we want to have an expectation right now before we do on that?
I think the deed restriction, and it falls in the MDA is the best way to handle it, that's my opinion. I think it's handled either way, when it comes back to planning, commission is gonna do all we say anyway.
But this is the only time we can do the app, because we're doing a rezone, so I don't think when it comes back to us, we can ask him to make those street improvements unless we've made, asked him in in the MDA, correct?
Yeah, and if we have it part of the deed restriction, concerning if we get it now, it may not be enough to over it down the road. Sometimes that's.
Which maybe for the, it's not fat part of the distance, maybe it would be better to wait for deed restriction, and if we don't get it, we. It's one that you'd be willing to gamble on, I would assume, just because if things are changing in price, right, by the time that happens, you get it, we'll end up with one. If we don't get it, we're not losing that much.
So deed restriction, rather than putting in the MDA, or putting the deed restriction in the MDA, instead of an escrow in the MDA.
He's not going to want to put the escrow on you for this, he's selling the place. Well, trying to enhance his sale, but he's not going to put any money down in there in escrow for this. Well, and honestly, that's probably the best thing for the applicant and for us, because of all the changes that are going to happen right there, and it's going to be significant. Like that building, from my, what I can picture, it won't be that, not, then a lot of that lot will be gone, right?
Yeah.
I mean. Unless that road doesn't sit in the middle of that right of way.
Yeah.
If that road, if the asphalt is way to the south side of the right of way, sure.
Yeah.
If, you know, but if that, if say that that's that asphalt existing in the center of the right of way. The building will have to build, the old building will have to build.
So what deed restriction exactly is, how many to need, or just what improvements on?
I was thinking we should just ask for fourteen hundred, I don't feel like it's fair to ask for forty seven hundred, when it's going to be a major change anyways.
Are we asking him, when else would be forty seven hundred, that's on forty seven hundred?
We did, we did on Buffalo, the city of Buffalo. That's a lot further down.
It's further south.
That's not going to have a giant forty seven front of it.
Okay, yeah, this was.
Um, I don't hope that's like. Comparing apples to apples or nothing, but I feel like I would be less concerned about it, just because I know that it's become a state issue, right, the state's put that really in that bridge, it would be a huge thing. So whatever improvement anybody right in this little section does is going to be gone and void anyways.
Is it going to be a problem? I mean, the state probably won't come through for a very long time, are we going to need some sort of improvements until we get to when the state takes over, is it going to be a problem before then?
On fourteen hundred.
So we might.
It's currently a problem.
Well, fourteen hundred, well, but you're not worried about fourteen seventy hundred. That's that's my concern, it's improved. There could be a long meantime, and if it isn't improved by the developers, then that's going to fall on the county, and so the state takes it over.
But we're talking about a developer, all this guy wants to do is sell this property, he's not a developer.
No, but if we put in the deed restriction, that means whoever.
Oh, for forty seven.
For forty seven hundred, that's the question, do we do both or just one? And I'm just afraid that if there's a long time before the state gets involved, then the county might be on the hook to include it, if it becomes a congestion.
And find out some of the time to ask.
You know, I'd ask for them later, if they come, I don't know the day it's coming in.
Well, we can always, we can always do it like a real negotiation, and propose that, and let the conversation go, and then maybe we don't require as much in the end.
If they have. Yeah, maybe look at traffic study.
What if you don't have right there as a right of way right then?
I mean, that's just a hundred.
A hundred feet.
Just a hundred, yep. General plan, it says long term should be one thirty two, so in time it'll be pretty wide, but. Probably fine for now.
Fast forward. It's hard, because if somebody does develop it next year, which is way before, I mean, this other stuff is going to happen. It really should have those improvements, it should have sidewalk and everything to make it safe, because it's probably not safe, would you agree with that, Andrew? Right now, it's not.
Yeah.
So if they develop it, it probably, even if that stuff ends up getting ripped out in ten years. Because it's needed for right now, probably. I don't know, I get, maybe that's not a question for us, maybe that's an engineer thing, or somebody, I don't know, but. If, and that area is formed base right there too, correct?
Um, it is intended to be long term, yeah.
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 So the old building might be safe, is what I'm getting at, oh.
Yeah.
Because it would put it right on the edge of the sidewalk.
That's the intention, as long as we can get the speed limit slowed down.
Right there. Can't jump the bridge if you're slowing down, Charlie. That's already to the top side. Well.
Well, I defer the amount of improvement, I mean, amount of extra land, asking for the improvements on both sides is reasonable, probably the safest option. And so it might be really complicated if we don't ask for it.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't work, then it's not meant to be, maybe it's not meant to be changed and rezoned at this time.
Yeah, if it doesn't, if it's financially viable, then maybe, yeah, that's.
Keep it what it is.
I think that, you know, I think the rezone will go through, just depend on if the developer wants to develop, knowing that it's deep.
Well, they're going to call the application, I guess.
Oh, yeah, that's the thing, yeah, they just like, oh, we don't want to put that.
It's gonna work, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, they don't want the deed restrictions, so with this rezone, got it.
Well, I think it's that time.
Are you keeping it second?
You're good.
Thank you. Welcome everybody out to the Western Weaver Plan and Commission meeting for Tuesday, September sixteenth, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, thank you, looks like we're missing Commissioner Andrea and Commissioner Roddy for tonight's meeting. First item on our agenda is the minutes from July seventh and July fifteenth, if anyone have any. Comments or concerns with those two minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and just put those into the record, thank you very much. Next item, and only item on our agenda tonight, legislative item number two point one, Director Grover.
Thank you, Chair. This item is a legislative item, as you mentioned, and will require a public hearing, the legal attorney, open and close that public hearing with a motion. We would like to have the applicant present first, and then after the applicant presents, we'll have staff present, and you have a public hearing. Remember that you're just making a recommendation to the legislative body on this side of, you're not the final decision, just the recommendation.
Thank you, Director. Okay, we have our applicant come up and present. Give us a few words on what your intentions are.
Will you please say your name and address for the record?
It's ma'am, do I need to pull this down, or you can. Probably will, yeah.
How are you all staying, so I'm glad to be here, my name is Dale Jordan, and I own the property located at fourteen oh two South. Forty seven hundred West in Weaver County, and this property has. Changed hands many times, and it's been around the block, you know, several times as well, it's a unique piece of property, it consists of two tracks, and. The total acreage to it is two point oh six, and it dates all the way back to in the nineteen hundreds. There's a house there as well as a building. Um, what we're applying for today is we have basically two, two different zoning classes. And on those zoning classes, we have an A one and then a C two. This building has been, I guess, from the nineteen thirties predominantly, as was a a feed shop, and it was a gas station, I may have those turned around. And then came to be known as Davis Meat Packers, where they packed meat for many, many years. And when they left, we purchased that property. And went in and totally gutted the property, we took a lot of time when we gutted this piece of property. Because we wanted to be sure that we kind of looked at the history of the building and where it came from, and so. I don't remember the lady's name that came down from the historical part, but she brought some pictures down, and I meant to bring those, but I came in on a flight today and was not able to stop and get those. Of what the original building looked like back in nineteen thirty two, I think it was, where it had an awning, and it's just changed shape a couple of times, so. What we did when we gutted the building was came back and made the building as presentable and as close to the feed shop and the older. Building as we could for aesthetic purposes, we put a lot of money in the building, we totally redid the inside. With new stained concrete floors, upgrading all the plumbing, electrical. Of course, the exterior, we've been working on and have done the same thing. The problem that we've run into is that it's been zoned C two, as I said, for a long time. But the lines due to the maps between the county and the different organizations have not been clear as to where the C two zone starts and stops, and where the A one. Begins and ends, and so it makes it difficult to decipher and to really use the property, so our application is turned in today. To try to make the entire property C two, what we're talking about is an L shape piece on the backside and the one side of the property that would. Essentially make the whole two point six acres, two point oh six, excuse me, acre C two. In the work that we've done to keep it up, we just want to be sure that we're compliant with the zoning ordinances that we do, and we've tried to be good neighbors, we've put a lot of money in it, we've done. Other service work, we work in the community, so we're very community oriented, and so that's our our application process tonight.
Thank you, commissioners, any questions? Okay. Anything else you want to add to that? Sure, that's it, okay, thank you, Felix, you want to give us your staff report?
Yes. Hi, good evening, commissioners, it's nice to understand a little bit of history of this of this property. And being that some of us are are pretty new to this area, and maybe not be familiar, so it's great to see that, you know, some of the. The aesthetics were preserved when when making those upgrades, but so here's kind of an aerial view of this proposal. And again, I'll probably restate a few things that Mr. Dale Jordan already said, but this is a request to expand the zoning boundary from what it currently is. And that way, the C two zone boundary would encompass the entire property, as well as extending out into the center of the of those streets, because this is a corner lot, as you can see, you have fourteen hundred south on the north. And forty seven hundred west. And so, in effect, what you would be doing is you'd be expanding the C two zone boundary. And amending the zoning map, the current zoning map, and to occupy this entire two point six acre parcel. And the C two zone, there's there's many different things that would be allowed in the C two zone, and that I'll I'll cover in a little more detail. And also surrounding this red line is currently zoned A one, so that's agricultural and some residential uses with that, as you can see, there's some houses across the street to the north, also just right next door to the east. And. Let's see here, with this request, we also have a development agreement, and so with with, and that was included with the packet. There are some suggestions that I have, my closing slide, I have some suggestions, suggestions that would be added to the development agreement. And the planning commission is also welcome to add other, if they have any other observations or requirements that they'd like to see added to the development agreement, then they can gladly do so. And. So you're going on to the the next slide, so in this, in this particular circumstance, what we're looking at here is, this is the part of the site. And so we have what looks like a commercial building with that flat roof, and then you have an existing old house. And so if if there are residential uses taking place on the property there, and especially if they're within the C two zone. Then they would be nonconforming uses, they would continue to exist as nonconforming uses, and as long as they don't expand. And as long as they're, if they're left vacant for a one year period, then that that grandfather right kind of goes away, and then the entire property would. Likely just be used for commercial, and so that's something to keep in mind, is that when when a when a proposal comes in to expand any commercial uses. There's some design review that comes into play, however, if they try to expand the residential use in this on this property, it would not be permitted. And so the planning commissioner right now is acting as a recommended body to the county commissioners. And the planning commission may find compatibility with the general plan and existing ordinances. And here is an image taken from the the Western Weaver general plan, and so we have this area, this red arrow points to the site, and the. The this dark purple, or almost a burgundy color, is is considered mixed use commercial. And I was, I was curious, what will be, what would be mixed use commercial? Yeah, it would primarily be, you know, commercial uses that have access to, close access to the. Some of these, some of these more intensive commercial areas, as you see, a quick jog to the north, you would have in that large dotted circle, that would be commercial centered. And this this red square that you're looking at, that would be the property, and that is the the mixed commercial area, and surrounding that, you'd have some orange. And that is what's called mixed use or mixed residential, and that would be, you know, townhouse, townhomes and apartments, things like that. Yeah, this is taken from the general plan, this is just a guide as to what could feasibly take place in this in this area. And. And then this all of this, this shows the current zoning, so the current zoning map is, this property is surrounded by A one. So the current zoning map is, this property is surrounded by A one. And the current C two zone boundary is, you can see it doesn't quite cover the entire parcel. And so there is, there, there is some confusion when, when someone calls the planning office and says, hey, can I have her the commercial building? Here, then it's, it's, it's not a clear defined boundary to, to have this as it's drawn here. So it's, it's always helpful to have. If the C two zone boundary aligns with the parcel boundary, obviously that's an easier way to, to determine where those, where the uses can extend to. But it also is helpful to see where, where the county can require C two zoning improvements. Because for instance, if, if an application comes in for a conditional use requirement, and they want to make some expansions to these, to this commercial uses, the county would then be, okay, well, we need to make sure that we. Then we can add the requirements that would extend to the, to this own boundary. Which in this case, if, if we decide to amend the zoning map, it would align with the parcel boundary. So it's always a good thing. The blue line indicates what's considered a fourteen hundred South Street, future minor arterial, eight foot ride of width. And so, and then also forty seven hundred West is also a future minor arterial. So what this does, it actually shows the potential for these right of ways to be widened. Not only the, the, the asphalt and, you know, the, the physical improvements along these roadways, but as well, as well as the, the expansion of the public right of width, so. And. I've included some, some details as far as what would be required in the development agreement for things related to, to improvements along the, the public right of way. And. Let's see here. Okay, so the, the proposed zoning map looks something similar to this. As we've already discussed in great detail and. So I want to, I want to touch a little bit on the complete street requirement. And. So for the C two zone. There, the purpose and intent of the C two zone is to provide suitable areas for the location and various types of commercial activity. And the. Specifically in the Western Weaver area. It provides a broad range of commercial services and goods to serve the larger community area. And so it says these areas are intended to be clustered around traditional town or village centers and non-stromed along the highways. And. The, the setbacks for the C two zone are quite different than what you'd find in the A one zone. In this case, it would be a, the front yard setback would be fifty feet from the center of the road. In effect, what that allows is the buildings would be ideally pushed a little closer to the road and to the sidewalk eventually when there's a sidewalk. And then that way you would have street-facing condition. And then the, the, the side setbacks or the C two zone would be zero. Unless, that's if they have the perpetual maintenance agreement with the neighboring landlord. So without that perpetual maintenance agreement, then the side, the side yard setback would be ten feet. That's the closest they can go. And. And then the rear setback is, is the same, zero with, with the maintenance agreement and without. And we also have in the C two zone code, you have a list of permitted uses. So what we've done is we've actually taken those, that list of the C two zone permitted uses. And we've, we've whittled it down a little bit. We've taken a few of the uses out and with the cooperation of the homeowner. And so we've, we've included that, narrowed down the list of permitted uses, we've included it with the development agreement. One other thing I'd like to touch on with a. There's also what's called a complete street requirement. And so a complete street requirement is, is intended for multi-use. So you would have some vehicular uses as well as some pedestrian uses. And that would require a pathway, sidewalk, pedestrian light, and street trees. Appropriate clear view at intersections and also safe street crossings. No greater than three hundred foot intervals. And. Those, those complete street requirements come into play when commercial, the commercial site is expanded. And then I'd also like to touch on a little bit quickly on the architectural screening standards. Because, because this, this property is surrounded by residential, particularly on the east, you have a home right next door. It, it's important to provide some protection for the existing landowners, the neighboring landlords, as well as people across the street. And so what we're looking at here is architectural screening standards from the county code. And that would actually, it regulates ways that we can minimize the impacts for, for some of these commercial uses, things like, like fences and plantings like trees and shrubs. That would be, that would be done on the boundary between those, those two. Be, be done on the shared boundary. It would, it would, it would in effect act as a buffer, and then you would all, the screening would also be a visual screen. That way, if there's maybe some, some sound or maybe some, some light that comes from the property, then the, the, the solid, maybe a solid wall or some type of fence would act as a screen for those type of uses for the great property. So staff feels like the, the, using the county code as far as, as far as the landscape requirements and screening requirements is a good idea. We've included that as a recommendation for, for this proposal. Yeah. Just going to go on to the next slide. So here, here's the staff's recommendation. And staff, staff recommends a positive recommendation with the, the following three requirements. That chapter one oh two, the architectural landscaping and screening standards shall apply to the site. Number two, the development shall take place in accordance with the standards of the C two zone code. Chapter one four twenty. Permitted and conditional uses allowed within the property are limited to the list attached under page twenty-nine of the development agreement. And so we have. We have those uses in those, that use table, that edit and use table for the C two zone is part of the development agreement. If there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And thanks for your time.
Commissioner, any questions for Felix?
I've got one. Lady called the. Agreement on the property line, perpet- perpetual agreement. That mean he has to do with the neighbor, see what they want to do with the technical set back? And the guys the fancy views it.
Yes, I mean, as far as the type of fence, I think there will be some ability to negotiate with, between the two landowners. As, as long as there is a screening device, I think that's what the county would probably primarily be looking at. But the, the maintenance agreement would be between the, both owners, yes.
Anyone else?
Felix, let's bring to the report. I'm comfortable with what you marked off as far as the, the use, use of that. I think it's appropriate to have a lot of those be conditional. One thing that we've kind of talked about in other conversations throughout our meetings was the ability to apply some road improvements there. If we're getting a rezone, we usually are asking or requiring some improvements there with, with a, a rezone. That's something you could add to this if needed.
Yes, that's correct.
Anyone else? All right, I'll ask for motion to open public hearing.
Chair, I make that motion, open the public hearing.
Have motion. I have a second. Have a motion, a second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Motion passes. We are in public hearing. Please come up to the spectrum and give your name and address and give us three minutes of thoughts on your mind.
Robert McFarlane, thirteen eighty-nine South, forty seven hundred with. Currently, Stewart is a half mile away.
Right?
Right.
Should have wrote down what you. I guess, but question, what, what about that? Bring it through in the area for what they were.
We'll, we'll take the questions and then we'll address them after everyone's gotten up and we've spoken. Thank you.
My name is Gloria McFarland, thirteen eighty-nine South, forty seven hundred West. I heard you say that, you know, there's going to be some changes to our road out in front. The state has already contacted us as to that. They're going to be putting in some new pipes and, and things. And eventually they'll be widening the road, and we understand that. And part of our property will be going to that too. But right now, the way the building is, if it, I, I heard you mention that changes had to be made because of that, because of the front of that building is so close to the road now. When there's parking there and you come down fourteen hundred west that you cannot even see to get across the street without taking your life in danger. And so those are things that we feel may, need to be addressed, but that building can't continue to have that blocking to that obstruction there for us because it's highly danger, dangerous. And forty seven hundred is getting really, really busy, so busier than ever. And my other question was, I understand the C two commercial part of it. Now that will open up that partial of land under development. I mean, somebody can go in there, do away with the building, do away with the house and put in a gas station. Could they? Could they put in a restaurant? Could they put any, any kind of commercial activity in there? What I'm saying. Now, we under, we heard that somebody was considering putting in apartment buildings. Well, and then we called and they said, no, that's not the case at all. So, but we are concerned about what's going to go in there eventually because of the impact it has on our neighborhood. We're still residential. Even though our neighbor next door has his business in his backyard and runs his excavator business out of his backyard and still residential. So, you know, and we still have, have some agricultural land around there. So anyway, those are my questions and I was just.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right Commissioners, I'll ask for motion to close public hearing.
So moved to second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes going now out of public hearing. So Felix, well, to address the, the sewer. Yeah, it's, it's a ways away is, I mean, it's a ways away from everything, you know, in that area right at the moment. For a commercial property, what's the effect?
Yeah, for a commercial property, I mean, they're, they are pretty limited on what they can do as far as, I mean, and that's something I, I did. I should have made on it in my, my report was that, you know, if, if, if a proposal comes in for a, some type of commercial use. Right now, they have, they're operating on two septic systems. And so they are obviously limited by that in alone because the health department would be the authority over that. So they would have to get involved and review what capacity that those two systems have to support some type of commercial use. And so that's, that's a major factor is that would, that would inhibit growth on this property at this time.
A question, do we currently allow new commercial buildings to be on septic?
Yes.
Oh, you do.
There, there are several in, in the value that have.
But some, some new ones, not existing, but there isn't co-prohibiting that.
There isn't co-prohibiting it, but it doesn't limit like the, the intensity of.
And they allow uses depending on.
Yeah. Yeah. So my, my thought was, is you know, if, if, for instance, if this, the zoning map amendment is made and someone has a proposal to do, let's say, a, a sports, an indoor sports cleanup facility. Then the health department would be, would be, would need to get involved. And that could supposedly have a limiting factor. Otherwise, if the, if the investment makes sense for that property owner, then they would need to bring sewer to the property or if that's done. So that's, that's a good, good consideration.
Basically, just like a residential, just to get the, to get, to get the zoning for third acre lots they have and bring sewer. It's essentially the same thing, only it's business instead of residential housing. Yes. So another, you know, and, and we've talked about a lot. The, the roads fourteen and forty-seven and the position of that building. We've had a lot of discussion about that in the many meetings that we've had. So going forward with the way that that's zoned right now, we had a little bit of this conversation in our pre-meeting. So the, the general plan calls out right now, not the zoning, but the general plan calls out right now that that area could potentially be what is called formal base, which would allow the building essentially to be right up within the sidewalk and the curb together dis- distance from asphalt for road purposes, correct?
Yes. Yes, they would. I mean, we would still want to look at the clear view.
Yeah, they'd just still be restricted on corners because of sites. And so that would be consideration. We don't want this, everything around that building to develop and still have that building there. And that's a consideration that. Man, does it go that it depends on how it goes through. Review, like if, if the existing, the existing part, like what, once they want to develop the parcel, we can't have anything non-performing on the site any longer, I would assume.
Right, we typically try to bring things into compliance as much as possible. If there are certain things that we can work with, with engineering can do that. Still accommodate things, we'll try to do those certain types of things. So in the future, but typically we require them to come to full compliance at that time.
And, and in fact, this is usually isn't negotiable.
Yeah, it's more of a life safety issue, and so we would do those with more scrutiny. Also, we look at sewer and water. Those are more life safety and like mystery, I mean, gated or close to the pad.
Anything else, Commissioner?
I did want to address Gloria McCorman's concern about uses. And we have went through the use table and restricted uses in that area that we felt would impact residents in that area. And so we went through everything in the C two table to try to eliminate uses that could have an impact on residents. Just wanted to make that.
And I would just add that I think all of them are going to have an impact, but we're trying to find impacts that are more. Some impacts are more beneficial to a residential potential community, and some of them are more deterrent to the community. And so I think the focus was to find things that would be advantageous to. And so I think the focus was to find things that would be advantageous to a community rather than.
And can kind of the issue with this is that a part of it is already zone C two. So they have those, they have those abilities to take advantage of in the C two code or zone uh right now. Um they're just asking to, you know, extend it to the full, to the full extent of the property um that was not done previously. So as far as that goes, it could do some developing there is commercially, even without this adjustment uh to the property. So.
And you may just reiterate that the uh septic tank is going to prevent them, to further restrict these uses as well.
Yes.
Something. Not much.
That I know I, the applicant wanted to address some things at the end.
Yeah, you know, okay. Yeah.
I don't know, I just, yeah.
Thank you, no, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, very good. Anything else, commissioners? All right, well, thank you, Felix.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Then commissioners, I'll ask for a motion on this item.
Oh, we're not gonna bring up the, I thought we were gonna discuss um or we had a question for him about something I I remember, sorry, I wrote something down, but I thought we had a question for the applicant.
No, okay.
About improvements.
Yeah. Okay. Join us, please. Yeah, we, we, we close there, yeah.
One, one thing, just for clarification to myself, I guess, is the current zoning does not have these restrictions.
Right.
By rezoning it, so the whole thing gets that they're getting more restricted, correct?
Yes.
Want to make sure that is clear.
And I apologize, I thought we were just gonna go right to the motion for what we, what we're gonna want. But you're right, it's probably better to have a conversation and see if it's acceptable for again. Okay.
Oh, um I just know you made a, but you, you kind of made a motion like you wanted to talk earlier and so I, I thought this would be a better time.
No, I, I did, I just didn't want the um, and I think it was covered here, I mean, with everything it technically is C two now and those things could be done anyway, but we, we don't have any intentions of doing those. We just need the property line to expand because the other alternative is if these roads come in and the eminent domain takes my building, where am I gonna put a building? And if we don't have a C two to move it out, there's gonna be no place to put the C two or to put the commercial building if, if it's gonna be torn down. And so I can't see that it's where it is and I, I just would want the community to know that we've, we've been there a while, we've put a lot of money and a lot of time and all the effort into it. It's not something that we take lightly and we're looking to, you know, to take away from the community at all.
Commissioners, did you want to talk about the roads at this time? With the advocate or do we want to?
And I guess it's probably, I think we're kind of, it seems like everyone's kind of in agreement among the county commission from our uh work session that um if it, if improvements did happen on the property that were um different than the existing use, we would be looking, we're talking about a deed restriction so that once those improvements happen, that triggers the improvements on the street to be in performance with the C two zone. So as long as the use stays the way it is right now, no improvements needs to be made, but um once someone, you or a future um owner wanted to make uh you know, anything that requires like a building application, something like that, then that would trigger the improvements on the, the streets.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just need to do some research on that to be able to answer that question because the concern that would would come from me is are we giving that land up for donation or are we, are we deeding that land back to the county? And if so, then you know, if it's still usable land that you just want me to decorate, then that's one thing, but if you want me to commit to giving back the land to the county at this time, I would need to, to get some counsel on that to be able to answer that question.
Thank you. Okay. What the, what the motion would be, at least I think it would be, is that we would ask that that there would be a deed restriction on the property for any further development. And that, and that would constitute that, that, that there would be road improvements on fourteen hundred south and forty seven hundred west to accommodate traffic. Um it's something that we've asked for, for all the other developments that have happened along fourteen hundred south, going east to your property. And we would ask for it on that property to a future uh application for further development of the property.
It, the deed restriction makes it so that currently, if nothing happens on the property, then you don't need to do anything. But it would be triggered if someone came in to develop it in a different way, then they would be required to um improve and donate to the county the, the right of way.
And what type of right of way is that footage wise? The fourteen hundred south Felix had me here is eighty feet.
It's eighty, yep.
And potential on that way center.
It's from center, yeah, so, so it'd be forty from center. Yes, sorry, please. So you actually need the um fourteen hundred south eighty feet and that's the entire right of way. So as far as is what do you think determining the amount that you would be responsible for, basically from the center of the right of way of forty feet? Uh if maybe you've already dedicated some, maybe you only need to give an additional fifteen feet or ten feet or something. And then on forty seven hundred west, the right of way is proposed one hundred to thirty two. And so um at the time, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want you to be overburdened by, you know, giving a large chunk of land, especially if it's not really necessary at the time. But we would, we would want to make sure that you anticipated for right of way expansion, either maybe by increased frame or setback or maybe partially dedicating some area to forty seven hundred west. Or, I mean, it could look a number of ways, but if we, we would definitely want to weigh at, you know, what's, what's fair and balanced approach and we, we're not asking too much for.
Director Grolin. And these things are typically required with any type of commercial development, um you're required to put those things in. So, you know, if you want to do those types of things, it's just something the standard procedure. And so you're, you're obligated, whether you're doing commercial, residential, um for those improvements uh because that's how the roads get put in, the county's not in the road business, we don't put in roads. Those are put in at the developer's time.
Okay. You all ready for my response?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I understand that and for that, um I, I have great sympathy to that. But what we also have to remember is that we can expand the property and keep that building. And so if I give you a deed restriction, then you're going to automatically be in that building because there's not forty feet from the center line to that building. So I think we have to come up with a different idea or a different way to work this because then we, I have to tear my building down if I want to build a commercial building.
No, that's why we're doing the deed restriction, it would say, it would not, it would not go into effect unless further development happened on the property. So as long as.
Build another building, there's development.
Yes, yes, and that's.
And my building, my front building can't be used for the business that it's in and, and I've put a hundred grand in this thing.
And that is the decision, I guess, to make is do you want to pursue the rezone or keep the zoning as it is? I, I just don't know how else we can proceed because as the property develops with lots of buildings, that's where we need to have those road improvements to make it safe. And so that was our concern is that the property is going to expand and then it's going, its use is going to expand and we're not going to have appropriate streets for the new use.
Again, I agree with that and I understand in the perfect world of we're going to tear everything down and build a new building. But as it stands right now, if I wanted to put another building out there, say, there's a couple of older structures there now and I want to tear those down because they're dilapidated and put another building there that I have expanded. And right now, I don't really know where that C two line is. And so I'm just gonna go out there and say, here it is, and then somebody's gonna come by later and say, well, he's using this much space. And so we're doing it the right way. And so I agree with what you're saying if we were planning to tear that building down. But I can't commit to tearing a building down. If I was gonna tear everything down and develop the property, um maybe as been stated here, you know, put a giant service station in or something like that, then I would certainly agree that I need to provide that property for the road improvements and things like that. But if we do improve something on the property, if, you know, then that's hard to give up a piece of the building and say that I'll tear a whole building down.
And those are things that you may want to, when you further get into it, do you want to look at surveys and find those things out before you make some of those um decisions?
Right, but if I give the deed restriction in advance, then I can't do any building.
Well, those deed restrictions, even if we don't put them in place, they are required when you do any developments. So we will look at those things with developments. So whether they put it in uh with this, we have to look at it when development comes into play. Um and so you're gonna have to address it one way or the other.
Yeah. So if you.
And I.
So then we can table this for tonight and you give more information on it if you'd like to do that. Um or we can, you know, or we can proceed with, with what we have, uh whatever the motion comes in then.
Um. Well, at this point, I mean, I've got too much invested in the property and the building to say that I'll give a restriction as if I build another building in the back, that I have to tear that building down. That just doesn't make. I, I, I understand what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, I just think that we should be able to figure out a something to work for both of us, we are. Yeah, it's just. You know, to work for both of us because it, it would defeat our purpose to come and change the C two zoning just to tear a building down that we've worked so hard to improve. So if that is your intent, is that you have to have that deed restriction in there tonight, then I, I have no other choice but to table it until I get some better advice because I wasn't prepared for that, that's a, something that caught me off guard.
And, and, and as director has stated, that might be something you're going to face whether we put the deed restriction in or not, so it'd be good to find out exactly what options are.
Question. If we put the deed restriction in like we spoke about and he builds a building somewhere else, it doesn't necessarily have to happen within that building that he's in right now. But sometime when, when it wasn't across there, that, that it might, I mean, that's when the.
There isn't really a way to draw a line in the sand there, it's.
Why did that building not be grandfathered in?
Once the property's developed, go ahead.
Uh I, I look at it, and maybe I'm wrong, so correct me, um but the building that you have currently is already correctly zoned. You're asking to rezone some A one property to make it C two as well. And when, once you do that, that allows you to add more stuff. But if you're doing that, you have to be just like, oh, your neighbor's down fourteen hundred and forty seven hundred where they have to do the improvements to make it safe for the new structures. So whether you're putting a new structure on or not, or tearing, or sorry, tearing your old building down or not, you're still improving it to change it from what it currently is by using the new rezone, right? And so that would require those improvements.
And there's a lot of hypotheticals at this point that we don't know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we don't know how, where the drop being made is, we don't know um exactly how that's gonna be laid out. So we don't know if certain things will happen. Um we might be able to work with you on certain things depending on the development that you're proposing, we don't know what you're proposing in the future. Um so there's a lot of things that are what ifs, then we don't know, we just want to make sure that we're covered as the county. If those improvements do need to go in, because like I mentioned, we don't put those improvements in, you do. Or whoever you sell the property to does, um or they're responsible for those things.
And I mean, to maybe get a little bit more perspective, if I'm thinking correctly and comparing it, it's not commercial but residential for thinking about single tree, which is about the same, maybe a little bit, it's actually further. But we require them to do the road improvements and bring the sewer in, correct?
Correct.
For a residential area, so I think, I don't know what our improvements would be exactly, and also safety concerns the main thing, right, for.
And I understand that, but I guess the big caveat to both of us is that we already have a C two zoning in place. And if you already have a C two zoning in place, I, I understand we're asking for a sliver on the backside. And I can, I'm happy to say if we develop that back there, that I would give you that, but I, I can't tell you, I'd take that thing all the way down fourteen hundred to forty seven hundred and tear my building down just because I needed a new building out back, I don't think that's prudent. And I know y'all don't either, I just don't know what the work, you can't tell me you guys are sitting there saying, say, tear this two hundred thousand dollar building down because you want to build a, a, a barn out back.
Well, I think you're under, correct me if I'm wrong, Felix, but you could still build a barn out back right now under A one.
What do you?
You could build a barn.
Right, but you understand what I'm saying.
You could have built a commercial building, correct?
I can't build a commercial storage building.
Yeah.
I have to come and call it a, a barn. But I can't build a commercial building. And so without tearing my three hundred thousand dollar building down.
I mean, maybe I can point you something, so um if I can point out, there's in C two zone code where it talks about complete street, just touched on it briefly. And it, it basically says a complete street shall be installed to span the street frontage of a lot or of, for the width of the existing or proposed completed grid including parking facilities and required landscape area. If this width is seventy five percent of the lot or greater, the complete street self shall span the entire street frontage. So. So. Modification of an existing site improvements, of existing site improvements that affect less than twenty five percent of the lot area is exempt from complete street requirements. But it says proportions of the lot uh proportions of a lot's frontage in a commercial zone where a complete street is not required by the subsection. A ten foot sidewalk is required. So at minimum, if he's making site improvements in the commercial zone, he's gonna have the, the ten foot sidewalk. And then it, but it goes on to say, as prescribed by the planning director after consultation, county engine. And says here, it says, like a police street design shall do ten foot pedestrian pathway or sidewalk, pedestrian lighting, shade trees, appropriate clear view. Um it goes on, it says the complete street design, street trees and planting technique and pedestrian lighting are subject to approval by the client director after both consultation at the county engine. Okay, so there are some design elements, like for instance, if Dale Jordan is willing to make, is ready to make some site improvements, yeah, he would submit a design for that for the, for the right of way. And we would look at it, we reviewed it. So it doesn't necessarily require him to destroy it by the whole building. Because we, like, like, like the planning director Rick said, we don't have all those details, you don't know exactly where things lie in relation to the right of way, it's like that, so. That, I think the, the C two zone code anticipates that there's gonna be some unique situations that come out. And, you know, maybe a ten foot side mark on fourteen hundred south doesn't make sense right now. But maybe there's an alternative to that, to make things more safer, like you mentioned. Maybe it's, it, maybe it's simply asphalt improvements.
Well, we don't know what that road design is going to be, and this is a safe. Well, we don't know what that road design is going to be, and this is a safety issue. And and it's not necessarily an issue for for a person who's selling a property, it's an issue for a person who's buying a property and what they're going to buy. And that's what this comes down to for me, is that if that's, if that's posted to deed. That person is looking at that property knows potentially, they're gonna be, it's, they're going to have it explained to them. What the requirement might be if they need to want to or need to further develop that property. So it's really simple in protecting future, the future ownership of that property to have something in place with the county now. That's my concern, because of the fact that that building, it's a great building, you did a great job remodeling it, I compliment you. It looks really fantastic. But as time goes on, that area gets more populated and those roads get more busy and those roads get improved, that building becomes a hindrance for public safety. So to me, you gotta, you gotta put something, I feel like something should be put in place now, that. Whoever might buy that property and want to develop further knows about upfront, that's my two cents. And and if Mr. Jordan would like to, you know, take a breath on this and and let us and have us table it. Happy to do that and have you come back uh at a at a future time and we can look at it then. You like, I don't know, Commissioners?
That's gonna be my question for Director Grover and. Would that be something that you feel like you and an engineer could give him a better idea of what the expectation would be? If he sat down and can give you an idea of what his expectations are?
We we can look at that, um a lot of it's spelled out in the ordinance on things who just indicated what those standards are. Um so it really depends on what Mr. Jordan is wanting to present, um which could impact your abilities or not impact your guilty. But I think it is very wise on your part to put those things in play. So that the property or whoever that is is aware of those things, so it doesn't come back to bite them. Um especially that if they're buying the property, it's simply worth turning down, they're aware of that. Ten cutting use group, Jordan helping, so it's just right now. Is it, we'll be landing growth more detail with you on that, it must cost a table, um your power view. You as the commissioner would like to do, deal with that and also Mr. Jordan, because uh development is um something you both agree on. And, you know, if he doesn't want to do those types of things, um and you're adamant about that, then maybe that's something where Mr. Jordan. Um says, okay, um you know, we'll wait to see what the county commission says about that. Or maybe he wants to call his application and draw, you know, those are all things that, you know, are could be discussed, so. You you know, there's, there's a lot of um things there on the table.
Sure. There is, and if I might just add, there's no way to come in and develop that. If I wanted to put a storage building in, I still have to bring that into planning office and it has to go through that. And there's a difference, we all agree, in a storage building and a development of the property. And I think that's where we're kind of mixing up on that a little bit, it's because a. A commercial storage building is not adding anything to the property as far as um traffic. It's, there's no um sewer, there's, there's none of that, so. If I was going to come in and develop it and put a restaurant in there. Then I would need to have herb appeal, I would need to have those things in that building, it's probably not gonna be conducive. As close as it is to the road for a restaurant anyway. So I I think we're just kind of spinning our wheels and I and I I agree that I'm just kind of blindsided by this, so I don't really know how to uh. Address it any further than I have, so with all kindness, I'm not trying to be. Um anyway, I I I just think I need to get some more advice and I need to look at this because I can't agree today to. Give up part of a building that I've worked so hard on over a storage building.
That's fair, we understand, I think that's why it's been offered as a courtesy to play inside if you'd like to table it rather than us pushing forward.
Okay.
Alright Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion, we're gonna kill this. So your official motion.
Thank you.
Alright, I got a motion to table, I've got a second, all in favor? Wait a minute, no, we need to do a roll call on this one, you're right, no, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
opposed, I have this table, we tell, we see it again, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, public comment for items that were not on tonight's agenda? Okay, Director Groan, any uh, or oh, wait a minute, I apologize, I jumped ahead. Commissioners, any comments?
Just as always, thanks to the community members that come out and voice their opinions, we appreciate it. And thanks for the applicant for being willing to have a discussion.
And and thank you for your time, I appreciate it, I do, thanks for being civil.
Anyone else? Okay, Director Groan.
I appreciate you on this item, how you deliberated, give the applicant. You know, where you actually made a motion, because you could have seen through and not give it. I I know that was very respectful to the kind of views of the lighting commission. Um also too, we have um some training coming up with some different conferences, I believe they've been emailed out to you, have you received the emails?
No, I got, I got her one for sure, not the.
Which one did you receive?
That's the October one, I think.
There's there's two in October. So the U L I is a week after the Utah A P A conference. Have, did you receive it on the Utah land is two?
I think the land is two, but not the A P A conference, but I think I get my confirmation from A P A, I'm working through it with um.
Crystalin?
Crystalin, yeah.
Perfect, I will give Crystalin, have her send the U L I one out to you guys. The U L I one is nice, just a reminder, that has to do with um planning and real estate. And so that's kind of nice, um goes to have the day on Tuesday and then a full day on Wednesday. Um that's down at the um the state real estate office at Sandy, so um that's always good to go to. Um and it deals with a little bit more legal issues as well, um so it kind of keeps us all wired on things. Whereas the Utah planning conference, um it's a two day event, Thursday and Friday, yeah, that's down south this year, so. Yeah, I'll get to make sure the U L I is sent out.
Haven't seen that one yet.
Okay, alright, and you know, and and we do not expect you to go to any of these. We just offer it as a courtesy, we pay for the registration, everything, because we know you guys got lives outside of this, um this I D jobs.
However, it does count for continuing education, right?
There you go.
And we need so much of that every year, right? Alright, thanks, Director Groan. Mr. Keel?
Nothing, Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, alright, I'll ask for a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Adjourned, thank you.